Call to Monday, May 13, 2019. Work session, uh, meeting, the Portsmouth City Council to order. And Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Glover.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Simmons.
Here.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. Dr. Patton.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. The FY 2020 Budget at a Glance. Since September 2019, the city's budget team has worked tirelessly to prepare for the presentation of the proposed 2020 budget on March 25, 2019. We invite our citizens with a transparent budget process, which include our guiding principles of continual evaluation of programs and services, and an overview of the key financial benchmarks and key strategic focus areas. We hosted a participatory FY 2020 Proposed Budget Virtual Meeting with over 325 participants. During the public work sessions from January through April, topics relating to the planning and the city's manager presentation of the FY 2020 Proposed Budget were key elements of each agenda. Areas were included sharing your Big Four Things, Portsmouth, the Best Place for Business, Portsmouth, the Best Place to Live, Tell the Portsmouth Story, and Lifelong Learning. All of the 2020 budget was built around your Big Four Things. The City Council Report Back Document was also inclusive of information about the budget. Mrs. Gloria Washington, Budget Officer, will provide a brief overview of the FY 2020 budget with the document which we developed in 2015 entitled Budget at a Glance. VDOT Supplemental Signs, our second presentation. On July 9, 2018, City Council received a briefing on the Virginia Department of Transportation Supplemental and Logo Signs Program. Since that time, staff have been working with the Virginia Logos, VDOT's contracted partner for this program, to explore all options and potential costs for supplemental signage available to the city. Tonight, Mr. Carl Jackson, Transportation Planning Manager, will provide City Council with an update on both programs. The third presentation, the Highland Drainage Assessment. More than 70% of the City of Portsmouth Storm Water Conveyance System is at the end of its useful service. Neighborhood drainage issues are often complex problems that extend beyond the neighborhood boundaries where the problems lie. Tonight's presentation will be used and presented by Mr. James Wright, the City Engineer, on the Highland Drainage Assessment area to provide an example of how staff evaluates drainage issues. And then we will have updates on the Pavilion, the Oak Grove Cemetery Fence, and the Churchland Bridge. We'll begin with Mrs. Washington.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, members of City Council. This evening, I will provide an update of the Budget at a Glance document, which was previously presented to City Council during the April 8 work session. The proposed general fund budget totals $248.8 million, an increase of 2.9%, or $7.1 million. This is a change from the previous document of an increase of $439,645, which includes internal general fund revenue and expenditure reconciliation adjustments to provide the $2.6 million increase for the city's local share for Portsmouth Public Schools, for a total of $55.4 million. This $2.6 million increase will cover the 3% wage increase for teachers and employees of the school system. Also included are adjustments for three civic organizations, Friends of the Portsmouth Juvenile Court, Food Bank, and the YMCA swim gym program for second graders. You will note in the overview if everyone has the Budget at a Glance that our proposed budget, as I stated, is an increase of 2.9%, or $7.1 million. It's structurally balanced. It still includes no real estate tax increase. It includes the monthly decrease to refuse collection fees of $1 per month, the 5% increase for water and sewer rates, the storm water management increase of 75 cents. It also includes the new hotel motel tax of $3, and it also includes the 5 cent cigarette tax increase. It also includes the 2% general wage increase for full-time city employees, exclusive of part-time seasonal temporary grant-funded position, courts, and constitutional officers and their employees, and provides the local matching funds for a 3% wage increase for constitutional officers and their staff. Establishes a new tourism division within the Department of Parks Recreation and Tourism. And of course, outline, as we had before, our six city councils, four big things. And then on the second page, where we have the graphics of the general fund revenues on this page on the back, 72% local tax revenue. These percentages basically stayed the same because we were able to do most of the internal adjustments with the addition of the $432,000 in new revenue. The proposed CIP projects have stayed the same as we presented at the last presentation, and the ongoing CIP projects have stayed the same. An important date, which is tomorrow, budget adoption on Tuesday, May 14 at 7:00 p.m. And I will entertain any questions.
Questions?
The 2.6 includes a 3% raise for teachers and
And employees.
School employees.
Yes, sir.
I take it that it's employees from superintendent on down?
Employees, I can't, all school employees.
Superintendent's an employee. Uh, you know, I gotta tell you, I've got a heartburn with us coming up with 2.6 for school employees and our own employees getting a 2%. And, Dr. Patton, I know that originally that wasn't your budget. This has gone down a different route. But, you know, I've got to express that, feel it in my heart. It's not right to our city's employees to do that.
What is the percentage that the school system expressed they needed that for? Do we know?
I thought it was for teachers. It was, I believe it was 3% across the board. It was 3%, but it was for all staff, not just teacher staff.
I think the school superintendent's subject to the board, not, I'm not sure that that's automatic.
I don't know. I'm asking.
What'd you say? I didn't hear the question.
I would assume that the superintendent's salary is subject to the board's action.
I don't know what, how.
Pardon me?
I say I'm not sure how.
I'm not sure either.
I would like an answer at
Tomorrow's meeting.
We can get it.
Other questions?
I'll get, I'll ask.
Well, if you're gonna, if you're gonna ask a question, then question number two ought to be, what is the dollar figure for 2% instead of 3?
Absolutely. Exactly.
I didn't realize it was looking at ours.
I think part of the issue was it was matching funds because of the state wage increase.
2.6 is 3%.
I think that's where it came from. It wasn't, we just didn't go with a choice of 3%. We were doing what needed to be done to get the state funds.
We need to verify that.
I think we have coincidental numbers, too. It's 2.6 million additional funds.
Yes.
My position is that we don't back down from that number. I think that that's
But it is set.
We like to handle that part.
I thought we did that.
We did.
What are we doing? Micromanaging? And they have a board to distribute the funding, and we want to know where the funding's going, and we're worried about whether the superintendent's getting, what are we doing?
Excuse me?
But that's not what we're supposed to do. That's why they don't trust us. That's why we can't, because we won't stand our lane. We need to rethink digging like that, and we made the decision, we need to move on. When we do this, it makes it seem like we really don't want to give it to them. Please, don't, don't do that.
Paul, I don't think that's the case. Bill just asked it.
Why should that decision have been made?
I'm not saying anything about the question. What I'm talking about is where this is all leading to. Why are we in on their distribution of funds that we've already allocated?
No, we haven't. You're going to.
Yeah, nobody's advocating that, though. Paul.
I also agree that, I mean, we already allocated, we already stated that we would proceed with the 2.6. We had several conversations about where the funding would come from to support it. This is what has been agreed upon by us as a body. We vote on it tomorrow, and I think, you know, there's, there's no more questions to be asked about that.
My question was, let me restate my question. I don't think it's fair that the school employees get 3%, our employees get 2%.
And that's, it's more of a statement than a question.
Exactly.
And that's, that's fair to say.
Good point. Okay. As is Y'all's point, that the reason it was 3% is because that's what the state is.
But I would like for that to be verified.
Okay. Paul.
Now, let me carry that further. Then I wanna, then I'm worried about why the retirees only got X amount. Then I'm gonna worry about why this branch is getting this low amount. We have to, we have to stay away from things like that. That's counterproductive to what we're doing. As governing body here, policy and procedure and funding, we, we need to do, now, nothing wrong with your question, but the question makes, would give folk the impression, yeah, we did it, but we're trying to wiggle out of it, trying to get away from it. We don't, we're not easy with it and let it go. It's still bothering us. We're still trying to find a way to, that's, that's all I'm saying.
Bill made a statement. I don't, that reflects Bill's position, it doesn't reflect the will of council. And I'd hate for anybody to think that the City Council as a whole, as a majority, is trying to micromanage its done. And I think we'll see that in the vote that we take.
Well, we haven't even, they haven't even received the money yet.
Haven't voted yet.
And we're worried about it. Where's it gonna go?
Paul, Bill.
I don't recall anybody questioning the 2.6. I'm questioning why city employees get 3%, our employees get 2%. I made a rhetorical statement that, that's the way I feel.
Well, let me explain. Can I?
You may.
Sometimes you can't give everybody the same thing. The most important thing is, is that they have been blessed to leave, to receive a 2%. Now, nobody at this table would want to give the city workers more than me. But we can't create a lost nest of jealousy that's perpetuating jealousy and malcontent. And we need to stay away from that.
Be ready for that on June 10.
Yes, the state said we're gonna give the city this much for the schoolteachers, and nobody will please match it. Yes, that's true. But even without that, everybody's happy, everybody's satisfied. Let's not create problems for ourselves.
Thank you.
Okay, I just, just as an update, of course, the governor's proposed budget for 2018 included a 5% raise. The school board gave 2% raise last year with the funding that we gave them, so an additional 3% raise is needed this year in order to meet the 5%. The cost of the salary is $2.6 million for them to have the 3% raise. So that's, just like Nate said, we needed to come up with the 3% because the 2% was already taken out of the funding that they had for last year. So we need to do this in order to meet the governor's proposed biennial budget for 2019, 2020.
That still had nothing to do, your statement, her statement, has nothing to do with my statement. I just made a statement that I feel if school employees get 3%, by golly, our employees should get 3%. That's it.
No discussion.
I didn't, I didn't mention about taking away the 2.6, or taking away anybody's 3%. I just said that I thought our employees should be recipients of 3%. End of statement.
We, as the leading body, our citizens follow us and follow our example. So when we talk about what we were able to give one group and what we were able to give the other group, we create malcontent within our city toward the two groups. We create problems with the City Council members in that, the fact, in that we are trying to do the best that we can. I have three children. I can't give them all the same thing. They don't need all the same thing. Adults don't need all the same thing, things. So we've done that. We've given the money. Let's not unintentionally, now I'm saying unintentionally, create malcontent and jealousies within our city.
Thank you.
And I just have one last thing to add. It was for SOQ-funded positions, and so the SOQ-funded positions, I think, are all teachers' positions, so that may not include their bus drivers, their custodians, and some other staff. This is SOQ.
That was the state, but the number they brought us will cover everything.
That's correct.
So everybody will get it.
Right, right. But there are SOQ positions for principals, assistant principals, and councillors.
Okay. Any other questions? This will be up for adoption. We have several ordinances to consider tomorrow night.
Yes, and I will go through them tomorrow night.
Let's go to item two.
All right, Mr. Carl Jackson will come forward with the VDOT supplemental sign presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, members of council. My pleasure to provide you all with an update to VDOT's highway sign program and our efforts here in the City of Portsmouth. And more specifically, I'd like to talk about the supplemental guide sign program, particularly for the Old Town Portsmouth Historic District. I will also present some rough cost estimates for the installation and fabrication of these signs, describe the impact of these signs versus a similar effort from Union Bank and Trust to install supplemental signs, and also provide status on a request that was made for the Virginia Logo signs and to install one near the Frederick Boulevard, exit 5 on I-264. So on July 9, 2018, a presentation was made to you regarding VDOT's highway sign program. And this presentation included a request for a supplemental guide sign or brown sign as seen here for the Old Town Portsmouth Historic District. And at that meeting, concerns were raised regarding the potential impact to the similar effort by Union Bank and Trust. They also wanted to install supplemental signs, and seeing as they're limited locations and they will both be on brown signs, there is a discussion of putting this on hold, you know, until the city could determine where the Old Town Portsmouth signs could go. Well, since that time, staff has met with VDOT's contractor, Virginia Logos, and with discussions, we've determined that basically there would not be a conflict between those two signs, between those two efforts. They also conducted a total citywide assessment of sign locations, both on I-64, 264, 464, 664, and State Route 164. Out of that assessment, 13 locations were determined to locate the supplemental signs, and they ranged in cost between $7,500 and $27,000 per sign. Now, as previously mentioned, Union Bank and Trust, they have a proposal to upgrade their signs on 264 and 464 to incorporate their new logo. And as I mentioned before, based on our discussions with Virginia Logos, there should be no conflict with our city efforts to install the Old Town Portsmouth signs and Union Bank and Trust signs. In fact, there are opportunities to co-locate as well on 464 as an opportunity. And in addition to the supplemental sign program, there is also the Virginia Logos program. These are the blue signs, which are opportunities for local businesses to advertise stores and restaurants within the area. And last year, the city requested that there be a sign near the Frederick Boulevard, exit 5 off of 264. And after doing a system assessment, we determined that it is possible to install a sign on Frederick Boulevard, 264. And in addition to that, the older Willett Hall signs that used to be out there have been taken down, and those will also be replaced with the Virginia Logo blue signs, so that'll create even more opportunities for area businesses to advertise. This map here shows the general locations of the signs. The brown dots, if you all could see, are the supplemental signs, and we've looked at sites off of 664 near the exit of Route 17 and 164, locations off of 164, 464, and 664. The blue signs indicate the logo signs, which are used for area businesses. And if I didn't mention, the blue logo signs actually are at no cost to the city for business to locate on these signs. They actually pay directly to Virginia Logos, so the city does not pay a cost at all for So in summary, as mentioned, the city would only be responsible for the brown supplemental signs for Old Town Historic, Old Town Portsmouth. And option one, based on the original request that was made back in July, would come to $114,000. Option two, based on the additional sites that we were able to find, would be an additional $100,000. But council should realize that these, you don't have to purchase them in bulk, that they can be purchased individually. And as mentioned before, they range in cost between $7,500 and $27,000. And the supplemental signs, it's important to know, can only be used for public facilities that have a recreational, cultural, or historic governmental military significance. And that's all that I really have. Again, I'd like to emphasize, sorry, oh, sure, I'd just like to emphasize that our efforts to create signage for Old Town Portsmouth do not conflict with Union Bank and Trust, you know, so at some point, we can give Union Bank and Trust permission to proceed with their efforts because they won't affect us. And then we were also able to determine a location for a new Virginia Logos blue sign for area businesses near the Frederick Boulevard vicinity.
Yes, Mayor, and Vice Mayor, members of City Council, as Mr. Jackson indicated, this presentation came back to you because we have just been able, working with the state, to get the information on the new Virginia Logos, which they were determined at that time getting their contract together. With that said, one of the things that the city has never been able to do, and even when we presented this in July, as it regards to the blue sign coming off of Frederick Boulevard, we were always told, the way the road configured, it's nowhere to put the sign, and now VDOT has found a place that is ideal for them, because they have to prove it, that a sign can go up that will be right there at Frederick, and the businesses there can contract with the Virginia Logo in order to have their sign on there. They are already in conversation with some businesses who want to own the sign. We do not know, we are not involved in that contractual process, that is with the state, and there are only so many that can go on the sign. The other piece here is now we have the figures. What we would like to do is go back, now that we've presented to you what our findings are, and come back to you in the June through August time, and make some recommendations of what it is that we see our possibility to start a phasing of signs as it relates to the Old Town District.
Nate?
The only question I have, speaking of Frederick Boulevard and the sign, will there be a sign for eastbound as well as westbound, or is that only one direction?
Yeah, generally, when they install the signs, they're in both directions, yeah, and the ramps as well as you exit.
I have two questions and a point. The first question is, the difference between $7,500 and $27,000 is
Yes, it's a lot.
Is that this sign and a sign the size of this room, or what is that?
It's also like geotechnical issues with installing the sign as well, like in some areas.
It's the same sign, it's just an installation.
Based on the location, there are sizing issues as well, you know, but generally, it's based on the location where it is. Sometimes I have to put in like concrete foundations and everything for it.
Okay, all right. Number two, on the blue logo signs on your actual picture, one of the logos was the Children's Museum, right there. So can or should, and that gets me to point three, because you've just hired somebody to tell us to, knows a whole lot more about tourism than the rest of us do. So I'm assuming your recommendations are going to include your tourism person and knowing where our people come from. Can or should we buy a Children's Museum of Virginia logo for the logo signs above and beyond the Old Town Portsmouth?
Oh, we will, we will have a place for our Children's Museum.
Get a brown sign.
Well, we can look into it. I think that it might be eligible, but we have to realize that there are a limited number of locations.
I mean, that's fine. I don't, I don't care as long as it's on something.
Right.
Above and beyond Old Town Portsmouth.
We will find out and get back with you.
Tourism people will
Right, we will.
Tell us what that should be. That was my third point.
Good. Other question?
Yeah, so the brown sign, I mean, is this red or is it my eyes?
Oh, it's brown.
Okay.
Brown.
The contrast on the screen.
Okay. I thought we were doing away with the brown and coming in with red.
No, there are guidelines that we must follow.
Look real close. That is brown.
Yeah. Okay. Just, just wanted to make sure it wasn't being replaced with.
No.
It's a faded sign. A little faded brown.
Yes, okay.
Kind of, kind of sort of related question. Is Union Bank gonna change the logo on the
They are going to, according to our discussions, May 25 is the date that all signs have to be changed and say Atlantic, so they will probably take those down because that's not going to be ready then, and then get a new stolen sign. And that has come from their, one of their vice presidents. Now, one thing we are looking at is the signs that the banners that are going down our quarter, the city purchased those, so we're in discussion with how we address that.
Bill?
On the signage, facilities like the Naval Museum and the Community Library, those will have space on signage. I mean, we have more attractions than, obviously, the Children's Museum. I mean, we have more attractions than, obviously, the Children's Museum.
We have not determined exactly what's to come back to recommend to council, what are the configurations on the sign. We'll probably come back with a host of things that could be considered. All cannot go on one sign, and there are so many logos that can go on a sign that goes on the interstate, so maybe we will have to configure more than one, but we'll come back. We don't have that information right now, and there are many things to be considered. Another thing that's called our agenda, we now have a cultural arts district. Is the cultural arts district going to have a sign to say the cultural arts district? So we've got a lot of things to consider and discussions to be had.
And we control the right of way for our streets, we can put signs on.
Yes, for our streets, yes, but we're dealing with interstate signage.
State maintain.
That's right.
Right, yeah, and so just the interstates, things to maintain, yes.
And Mr. Jackson, can I ask a question? This might be a little crazy, but digital signs, right? So the change intermittently, I guess that probably wouldn't be an acceptable way to do it.
Well, VDOT hasn't allowed those yet.
You're talking about our board up here that we...
Right, but I was thinking maybe because of the issue of not having a limited amount of space to place a sign for a company or an organization, whatever, digital signage, is that something that is allowed on the interstate? I know they have them on the billboards, but I didn't know.
Or it limited to VDOT's technology and what they allow, you know? But I'm sure they're probably looking into that.
Sure.
When they do, maybe that's something that we can try.
All right, you'll come back with...
Yes.
...taking into consideration all that's been said.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jackson. All right, now we...
This is not on this subject, but it's a sign thing, I just want to throw it out there while it's on my brain. And I don't know if it's possible or not, but University Boulevard, which is in Portsmouth, that you have to go through Suffolk to get to it, nobody realizes that's in Portsmouth.
University Boulevard?
Mm-hmm, like where the...
That's Tri-City.
Tri-Cities is behind the Kroger Marketplace in Suffolk, but once you get in there, the addresses are Portsmouth, but nobody realizes that's our city once you get back in there.
Tri-City out there.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Put a city, welcome to City of Portsmouth.
That's what I was thinking, a sign on that piece of the street so people know they're in Portsmouth.
So that street coming back to, that property that we own is not identified as City of Portsmouth?
No, you have to go through Suffolk to get there, but once you get to those addresses on those buildings are City of Portsmouth addresses, and I think it'd be nice to highlight that those buildings are in the City of Portsmouth.
Thank you, Mr. Clark, and we'll look into that and get back with a recommendation.
Thank you.
All right, we'll have Mr. James Wright to come forward to present the Highland Drainage
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Tonight, I'm going to use the Highlands Drainage Assessment Area to give an example of how staff looks at drainage issues in the City of Portsmouth. So across the nation and within the region, cities are experiencing more frequent storm events that are accompanied by heavy rains and flooding. This presentation will provide some context for our drainage challenges at the neighborhood level of the City of Portsmouth. As you see, as we go through the past five to ten years, thunderstorms are getting more frequent, they're getting more heavier, we're getting inundated with rains, hurricane seasons, we're getting more storms during hurricane season, hurricanes are getting stronger. Not just us, they're experiencing this in Midwest, they're experiencing this out West, so it's really an issue that's happening across the nation. So, we have an older system. The majority of our drain pipes were installed prior to 1960. 1960 is an important date, it was the next-to-last annexation of the city, encompassed the entirety of South Side Portsmouth is now part of the city in 1960. Churchland came on, was annexed in '68. What you have is the majority of our systems, county system, older drainage criteria, two and five-year storm events, older pipe material. A lot of the older, older pipes are concrete pipes, non-reinforced concrete pipes, or they're under roadways, they're not designed for that type of traffic load. The pipes that are corrugated metal, when our store conditions, they deteriorate, and over the years, as you stick a camera in them, you stick a machine to clean them, you end up pulling out the bottom of the metal pipe. And as the city developed, most of the roadways, specifically our interior roadways, were put in by the state. As the state puts in their roadways, they're just concerned about the roadway. So the neighborhood that comes along after state builds the road, not necessarily built to handle that drainage from the neighborhood, just basically for the roadway itself. Secondly, we have a large number of conveyance ditches. They're flat, some of the easements have been around for so long that people don't necessarily know that they have easements in their backyard, so there are a number of encroachments, whether they be fences, garages, sheds, or things of that nature. Flat ditch with an encroachment, water doesn't flow, so it doesn't take much to block the ditch up. And as we all know, we're very low and we're tidal, therefore, any high tide situation coupled with a rainfall event makes things difficult for staff and those neighborhoods that are draining. So, completed in 2007, the Citywide Drainage Needs Assessment with City Team and HDR looked at our overall drainage conditions in the city. It was to convey the magnitude of the citywide drainage needs, assembled high-level costs for the necessary neighborhood drainage and street improvements, and to prioritize drainage assessment areas in order of magnitude and cost, and then provide factual information as we have these discussions that have been ongoing, at least since I've been with the city, with neighborhoods, with council, with various people that have interest in drainage and stormwater issues. What that overall assessment did, though, it confirmed what we found in all the previous studies that we had done, studies that were done in the eighties, studies were done in the seventies. What you find is that you have five or six neighborhoods that are, for lack of a better word, critical, and everybody else is lumped together. There's no one neighborhood that falls worse than the other, they all have similar issues. So, these are some of the characteristics of the Citywide Drainage Needs Assessment. That assessment did not include private drainage systems, did not include commercial or industrial areas, did not include newer subdivisions, because the newer subdivisions were under current design criteria, and did not include Old Town or Downtown, because they were being studied under the master drainage utility, master utility study that was being done downtown. So, it examined, looked at three particular areas of the drainage system. So the collection system is how the water gets out of your neighborhood, whether it be ditch, pipe, curb and gutter, what have you. That's how the water in your neighborhood gets out of your neighborhood. The primary trunk drainage system is that system that collects the drainage from those other neighborhoods. So, say all the neighborhoods that are along Deep Creek Boulevard, the drainage system going down Deep Creek Boulevard is your primary trunk drainage system, similar on Portwood Boulevard, or Victory Boulevard, or any other street, major street, that's taking drainage from several neighborhoods. And your outfall is basically how water gets into the water body, wherever that water body may be, wherever it's drained into, so it goes from neighborhood to trunk system to outfall. And this study used several tools to actually evaluate the city system, used our GIS database, aeromapping, looked at existing drainage plans and studies, used observations from the city team, and then it ground-truthed those with staff questionnaires to both Public Works and Engineering Department to figure out if what they were seeing in their analysis, in their field observations, in their data collection, was actually accurate from an on-the-ground perspective. And so what ended up is they developed a level of drainage improvements and associated costs for street and drainage improvements, maintenance, utility improvements, and design and construction services. And this is a map that shows the thirty-eight drainage assessment areas. As you see here, so as you see, some of the industrial areas, the downtown areas are not included, and so you see larger swaths and maps that are assembled here that encompass the drainage assessment area. So, this is the actual costs that were from the study, and you see the 2007 cost data, the total cost for both utilities and drainage improvements was five hundred and eighteen million. That's citywide, just for those drainage assessment areas that were in the study.
Wow.
And 2019, using a cost escalator, you're up to almost eight hundred, eight hundred million dollars. So, moving on to the Highlands Drainage Assessment Area, breaking it down just a little bit. So this is the number, one of the largest drainage assessment areas actually in the What you have here is ninety percent of that drainage assessment area was constructed prior to current design criteria. Our current design criteria is actually the ten-year storm, so you have county system with no design criteria, and then you have, when we're just getting into using drainage design and looking at the impacts of rainfall, so you have two-year and five-year storm. So, that storm event where you can accommodate the most, the most common one that we use in state, the ten-year storm at the time, ninety percent of this neighborhood does not meet that criteria. Additionally, you have valley gutters and backyard ditches, and poor curb and gutter in this system, things that don't meet our current standards, and once again, you have older pipes that are at the end of their service lives. And this neighborhood, their primary trunk drainage system is along Victory Boulevard to Gus Lane, and also along Deep Creek Boulevard, and the two outfalls are St. Julian's Creek and Paradise Creek. And from the study, the total improvement costs were fifty million, today's number is about seventy-five point five million dollars. And this is the Highlands Drainage Assessment Area. Here in yellow, you see the golf course here, you see parts of Trugston, parts of West Craddock, you see Fairview Heights, South Fairview Heights, Highland Billmore, and so in that drainage assessment area, you have a number of neighborhoods and subdivisions that compose that drainage assessment area, as well as each drainage assessment area in the study. So, Badawe Manor. Badawe Manor is part of the Highlands Drainage Assessment Area, as I mentioned before, similar to a number of neighborhoods and subdivisions within that drainage assessment area. You have valley gutter, gas or storm sewer, but you have a number of backyard ditches being the primary conveyance for that neighborhood. So if you redesigned that neighborhood to today's standards, you wouldn't have backyard ditches, you wouldn't have valley gutter, you'd have a lot more pipe, you'd have curb and gutter. One thing to mention, just to backtrack to something I said earlier, all your newer neighborhoods have some form of best management facility, or stormwater management facility, that gets into that the street was built to drain the street. You can't have any additional runoff going into that system prior to what was there, and that's why you have those stormwater management facilities. All these older neighborhoods that don't have stormwater management facilities don't have the benefit of being able to detain water back to whatever that pre-existing condition was. I just thought I'd mention that as I'm going through this. And so, the primary trunk drainage system for Badawe Manor is, it actually heads out Victory Boulevard to Gus Lane, and eventually gets into Paradise Creek under the train tracks right there in Chesapeake.
Once it goes under Victory, does it become a ditch?
It goes pipe to ditch to ditch, and then out under the train tracks as a ditch, or almost like a stream, actually. And there were significant complaints from this, from several members of the neighborhood here, resulting from Hurricane Matthew. And just a little bit about Hurricane Matthew, it was a high tide event, you had ten to twelve inches of rain, the majority of that came over a short period of time. The entire city was inundated, I was out that night. I have a Jeep, and normally I'm able to get through most parts of the city, even in high-water instances, and there were a few times when I realized that I should just go home, that I couldn't get through. Several days after the event, there were still parts of the city that were flooded, cars were flooded under the overpass at Elm on 264, they were flooded on Victory Boulevard, and several other places still had water standing from that storm. In the thirty-day period that includes that storm, the city saw over thirty inches of rain. Your ground is saturated at that point, it's just the same as water hitting concrete at that point, because water can't get into the ground. Specifically, you have a ditch. Ditches convey water if the fall is right, but they also, they also drain water to the ground for infiltration. If your ground is saturated, the infiltration is done. So, the only other option at that point is to overflow the banks of the ditch. I will mention that during that event, we were able to get back to the business at hand in a somewhat reasonable, short amount of time, whereas we had team members that live in Virginia Beach that could not get out of their neighborhoods. So, it was a, Matthew was a serious event as far as rainfall and flooding, so just to put that event in context with looking at the overall system. So, these are some of the backyard ditches in the Highlands Drainage Assessment Area. As you see, fences that are in the easement. At, there was a time when ditches were constructed using half-concrete pipes, and so what you see here is these half-concrete pipes are starting, in a bad shape, it's starting to come apart. You see places where bushes have grown into the ditch, you see where people have made makeshift walkways across the ditches.
Look at the house on the ditch.
You see a shed or garage or whatever that is, immediately close to, and you see several obstacles for staff and public works as they try to go and maintain ditches. Their biggest thing being the ability to access ditches that are in the backyard.
When Mr. Wright and I were talking about this today, there is someone who has put a complete fence across the ditch. That's a picket fence, so it's going from somebody's yard all the way across the ditch to somebody else's yard. But these are meant, as Mr. Wright has said, Dr. Patton, some of these things are when we, you know, brought them into Portsmouth from the county, some of this stuff was already there. People had built these structures, and while this one here with the trees in the ditches, well, we will go and clear that. The people who have things right on the ditch, they are just grandfathered it's a part of their property.
In some cases, and I don't know if you recall, Dr. Patton, you and I visited a ditch off Mimosa Road.
Yes.
And that ditch is eroding the yard.
They're losing their property.
And in one case, threatening the brick ranch house adjacent to it. That's a situation that's still there and getting worse, so that needs to be addressed. Can you go back, take the far right, I would assume the easement goes beyond the concrete ditch.
If there is a easement.
If there is.
If there is, that would be correct. And so, in situations like this, so what happens when public works goes out to get to a ditch in the backyard? They find an accessible property, they get to the ditch, and they work their way down the ditch, and come out at the next accessible property. The term they use is when they clean, they bank the material out of the ditch, and so they have to pull the material out of ditch, put it on the bank, work their way down, come back the next day, get that material that they banked previously. So, current city efforts, routine maintenance by public work is one, and so they have to get into these ditches to be able to maintain the flow lines. They work with citizens, either through, directly with the citizens, or through my office and the city attorney's office, to work out if there is an easement, to make sure those people move the things out of the easement. If there is not an easement, there are other means that we can get through to get those objects out of the easement, so that the water can continue to flow and not detrimentally impact their neighbors. During severe storm events, they go out to these, for lack of a better word, hotspots or places where they know that they have issues, and get those issues when a storm is coming. Now, thunderstorm that pops up, they can't get out there, but if they know hurricanes come in, or northeast, or get enough wind, they can go out and check these hotspot areas. And then, of course, they address any concerns or calls that come in. And so currently, in the Highlands Drainage Assessment Area, the Engineering Department has a study ongoing to look at some of the conveyance... has a study ongoing to look at some of the conveyances in that area. So we're looking at using the existing Newport bond and the golf course to handle some of the excess drainage from some of these neighborhoods. We're looking at the outfalls and some of the trunk system for some of the known problem areas that we have. And that drainage report with the list of recommendations and projects should be completed by the end of the summer. Public Utilities Basin Number 13 actually encompasses a large part of the Highlands Drainage Assessment Area. A lot of the work that came out of the consent order with EPA and DEQ identified that as one of their priorities, sewer basins. So as they're looking at the sewer and water at a neighborhood level, we'll be coordinating efforts to address drainage issues within the neighborhoods as well. And so given these ongoing efforts, I'll walk you through just a little bit of our project methodology as when we're looking at these issues. So first thing, you want to address any failing, damaged, undersized pipes. And those would be the immediate projects, the immediate things that you address. And then you basically work your way from the low end of the system to the high end. So you want to look at the outfall, then go to the trunk system, and then get into the neighborhoods. If there are five neighborhoods draining to a trunk system and an outfall, one thing you don't want to do is if that neighborhood, say, needs larger pipes, size the pipe so large that the outfall and trunk system can't handle the water that you're draining to. You don't want to make improvements in one neighborhood and have those problems appear in another neighborhood. And that's why we work our way back. And the other thing is we coordinate with public utilities specifically at the neighborhood level. So we try at our very best to only tear up a street one time. Also, looking at where we are in our current landscape with our new stormwater rules, we have to count for water quality. We have to look at sea level rise. We have to look at the stormwater model that we're developing and looking and pull all these things together and make the best decisions as we're moving forward to determine what's the proper drainage fix for now, the long term. With that, I'll take any questions.
I guess you mentioned the water quality. I mean, how, isn't it affecting the aquifers that we talked about a while back?
As far as affecting the aqua, I know what you're getting. You're looking, you talk about the SWIFT project. Yes and no. I'll say yes for the fact that under the new stormwater rules, their primary way to achieve water quality is through infiltration. So you're not having a lot of the practices that transport water in a quick and swift fashion. You're trying to get water back into the groundwater, Richard. So eventually, yes, in general, but it's not direct injection into the aquifer similar to the SWIFT program.
Bill? I know in new developments, the new BMPs are mandated, but how would that be for a solution in an older community? Is that practical if there is land to do that? And is that less costly than trying to remedy that through piping and larger ditches and what have you?
It is not, it's more costly. It's not infestable. What you do is you do what is called a retrofit. And so you look at unique ways to treat the stormwater on the roadway. So you may have a bulb out on a street with a bioretention filter in it. You may add, for instance, our demonstration project that we're getting ready to do on Court Street. Court Street's going to have a median and some bulb outs for bioretention. That's going to meet the water quality piece for Court Street and provide some flood relief. So as you look at some of these older neighborhoods, there may be some city-owned parcels that you may want to convert to put something on. You may need, like I said, need to add a median somewhere or curb out or curb bulb out or something to account for that. And the extent that you can't do that there, you have to accommodate that somewhere else in the city.
I know we did something like that about 10, 12 years ago in the Truxton community with some BMPs there, that the drainage from 164 exacerbated the flooding in that community. And as a result, there's, I know there's one BMP. Yep. That's Ebony Heights or?
No, you said something else. You said Truxtons. You meant, he talked about that today.
So, yeah, so what you're referring to, so Ebony Heights was one of the neighborhoods that Calphol has in that priority list, that rotation. They did not have an outfall. So ultimately, what is that neighborhood going to look like when you design it with the fully built out street? And so those BMPs have to accommodate that ultimate condition. That was pre-water quality. So that's just volume. So as we continue to build out that neighborhood and retrofit that neighborhood with a proper drainage, quote unquote, fix, we may have to go and either retrofit those BMPs or do other management techniques on those streets that we work on.
And understanding, I think that when you gave this proposal, Mr. Wright, you were talking about some of these communities that are affected, there needs to be a sense of urgency, right? To repair some of these things, perhaps?
They're already working on.
We're working on a number of the neighborhoods around the city. I mean, from a staff level, pretty much everything's urgent. We have how we look at our priorities as far as life safety, damage to property and things. So we have how we look at systems. But if we're looking at a larger system, you never really know what that project is. And I know Dr. Patton gets frustrated with me from time to time when she wants me to identify where you're working. And I say, I'm going to work in the Victory Boulevard area. But what does that mean? Okay, well, as we look at the system, I can't tell you exactly where the project is because we have done that level of detailed analysis to determine is it an undersized pipe? Is it the outfall? Where is the issue? So I can't tell you exactly where the project is. I can give you a general, this is where we're working. And as we get to finish that preliminary analysis part, then I can start telling you where the projects are. Similarly, the Frederick Boulevard ramp's been an issue for quite some time. As we've looked through, now that the VDOT's come in at one point in time and put BMPs in the loop, still floods. As staff has gone through and done the analysis that I'm talking about now, it's an issue with the outfall. So public works has got a permit from the Corps and putting together a project to fix and make some modifications at the outfall. That should take care of most of the flooding at that ramp once that project's complete. But that's a long system. So you're at the ramp there by the compound where this outfall that is by St. Mark's Missionary Church.
Right.
That's quite a long ways to go. So like I said, the problem's not necessarily at the ramp.
I think it is, yeah.
It's down by the outfall.
Bill? You know, sometimes a situation can be helped by cleaning the ditches out.
They do.
And what's the schedule for that in some of these affected communities?
We can give you the schedule of, because there is a schedule habit for you tomorrow of where they're cleaning, when they're cleaning, and how often they're cleaned. So I can get that for you tomorrow. One of the things, in your CEB every two weeks, it tells you exactly where the stormwater projects are right now. Right now, the construction is Hillwood Avenue and Wright Avenue. Where are we with designing for projects? We're designing the George Washington Highway Colbert, the Chesapeake and Elmhurst Lane, Washington Street, Clinton Drive Drainage Improvements, Westwood Crescent Drainage Improvements, Edgewood Park Drainage Improvements, Pine Road Drainage Improvements, Highland Biltmore Newport Project, which you just spoke of, the Victory Boulevard at I-264, Ebony Heights East, Ebony Heights West, Burton Point Road, City Line Plaza Ditch Improvements. We update these as they are from design to when they're going to get ready to move to the next level. But these are all projects that are working now that address stormwater and drainage issues.
Just one curious question. Will the creation of more retention ponds and stormwater parks across the city help alleviate some of these issues? I don't know.
If designed and implemented correctly, yes.
Other questions?
Let's wait till the last because this is kind of slide off subjects slightly again. Well, talking about Matthew, you know, we had all that flooding. Every time that we have an event like that, we always have vehicles that attempt to go through floodwaters and they get stuck. And that prevents the emergency equipment getting through. Notice that, you know, certain key intersections that flood a lot, that reflective tape that's on the bottom of the sign poles now?
Yes.
It's the red, yellow, and green. Does the public, has the public been made aware of this and what it means?
When they were designing through working with emergency management, which a grant provided those, we did a public awareness. And I think what you're saying is now that it's almost June 1, and it's getting ready to start hurricane season again, we'll work with G. Popla and Justin Arnold and with Mr. Pace to get another campaign out there so the public will know.
Thank you.
Got that.
Paul? You said that this is effective if it's designed and implemented properly?
Right.
Is it being designed and implemented properly?
The ones that I can say in my 22, 23 years have been designed and implemented correctly. I can't speak to anything that was put in place prior to me being here.
Do you know one way or the other of the prior assessments?
Of the prior assessments.
Meaning whether it's effective or not?
Well, you have to think design criteria changes over time. So some of the earlier structures that were put in place were probably at a different design criteria, not at the current one. So it may have worked for that design criteria, not necessarily for the one that we're under now.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, all of the work that engineering and public works and dealing with stormwater, it's federal government guidelines that must be followed. You just can't go out there and dig a hole and think. You have got to do what the federal government says, and they are changing and very stringent on work. And as Mr. Wright said when he started, we've inherited a lot of the infrastructure from a county going back. And I asked him, well, why would you put 1960? Why don't you go back to 1931? And he said, I started with 1960 because that's when codes and requirements came into place. Prior to that, there were none. You just go out and put some cement on the side and whatever, and now it doesn't meet our standards. And we're working, as I shared, to upgrade and bring us up to the standards that are to be adhered to today.
Other questions?
We have two. He's going to update you on the Pavilion and the Oak Grove Cemetery fence.
Cedar Grove.
Cedar Grove. I keep saying Oak Grove. Excuse me.
It is Oak Grove.
I said it earlier. Cedar Grove.
Okay, so just a brief update on three engineering projects. So these are pictures of the completed mast fabricated at the yard over at Kalana's Shipyard. As you can see out the window, the final cranes are assembled and in place. They're start working on detentioning the structure, and they should start taking the structure down this week. Last week, Span Systems was in town to provide some additional coordination information to Crofton so that they can proceed with their portion of the canopy. They likely will get in here early while this is ongoing, the mast portion. Dr. Patton asked me to talk to you a little bit about some of the complexities with taking the mast down. As I've indicated before, this is not a stationary structure. It's not fixed, so it moves. There are complex engineering calculations that we had to do before. We are taking real-time measurements and have computer programs set up to monitor exactly what's going on with the forces in the structure so that we can make real-time adjustments should we need to. The biggest driver right now, as far as any changes with as far as tension or forces in that structure is temperature. Thinking that it's metal and it's not going to cool down, but so much, should not be an issue. One expecting to have rain and cool weather such that it may be an issue where you have to recalculate as you're out there working. And so we have team in place to do that so that we can continue to guide the contractor as he's doing that work. That's basically the update on the Pavilion.
What impact will this have on Eumogia?
Eumogia's already planned and starts next Friday and no impact at all.
We've had a conversation with Parks about use of the VIP area. We won't have a final decision about use of VIP area until the end of the week.
And if it's not there, we're supposed to, we have a staging area on the plaza, which is right there.
June 18th is still looking good.
That's our target right now.
Mm-hmm. That's our target.
So Cedar Grove Cemetery, so during Matthew, the wall was inundated, tipped over into Effingham. This was basically what was left, and this is the older fence style. This was in disrepair, so we actually ended up taking that part down to get to a good, reasonable joint. This is what the fence looks like now. And this is this piece here turned, and this is this turned section as you're coming back towards Church's Chicken, I think that's what it is. That was partially funded by FEMA. FEMA paid half the cost, the city paid the rest.